Well, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Quite a big crowd. It's a competition for the door prize. But anyway, you might have already seen in the five, we've had some articles published, so you might be familiar with some things that we're going to talk about tonight. But basically, we just wanted to have an informal discussion, let you know the details of the amendments, and then if you have any questions or points of clarification, or even other proposed amendments that you think we should consider, just feel free to let us know. The first part will just be us telling you about the amendments, and then the second part will give you more of an open forum for discussion. And basically, some background about the constitutional review committee is, we need once every four years to revise the student body constitution, which was first eradicated in 2004, but there hasn't been any updates made to it since 2004, so there's definitely been some changes on campus that haven't been reflected in the constitution yet, so that's one of the things that we're working on. There were just nine members on our committee, you won't be hearing from all of them tonight because two of the members are sick, but we've all been working since October to come up with these amendments that you're about to see tonight. I guess, first of all, does anyone know, because this is for the door prize, does anyone know how to, whoever raises their hand first, I will call on, how to access, no, you two members are sick.
We're about to see our signature.
How to access the student body constitution? Where can we find it?
It's on the WNL website.
Okay. So if you go to the WNL website and you type and do a search for student body constitution, you can find what is the current constitution that was ratified in 2004. So you get the door prize. It's when you kind of like sit with the door.
What?
There's no guarantee. So basically, the goals for tonight kind of correspond with the agenda, so we have like four different sections, which correspond to four different rules that we have. First of all, we wanted to create a student rights article. There's currently no student rights section in the constitution, so we wanted to put some basic rights in there. And then, second of all, we'll be talking about clarifying the powers of the executive committee, and within that, there's government transparency that we're working on, and then also more procedural role duties for the EC. And then, also, the third thing is reflect the structure and operation of government. So we'll be talking about how we want to split, to have a judicial branch section, a legislative branch section in the constitution, because currently, it's just basically all of the duties of the EC listed, and there's no other judicial bodies talked about in the constitution. And then, the fourth section will be those line of amendments. So we do need your feedback, and obviously, we need you guys to be talking to other people in the student body to let them know about these amendments. The EC will be voting next week on the amendments, and then the student body will be voting at the end of March. So we'll be having another meeting tonight at the last goal, so we hope for some more people to get that. Another thing is, you might hear us talk about the survey. You guys probably all got the email about the survey. We had 400 people participate in the survey, so we got quite a bit of response about some of the amendments that we're considering. So we'll probably be talking more about those results tonight. So I'll hand it over to the first person to talk about student rights, Jay.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for coming out. I know it's Thursday night and other things going on, but we definitely want every voice that we can hear to discuss the changes we're proposing. So the first topic is amendments and provisions to the preamble of the constitution. As you can see up here, in black is what the preamble currently reads, and in red are the changes that we propose. Currently, the opening line states that this constitution is the expression of self-government student body, and is the foundation of its government. So this is correct, but it's not the whole picture. So we revised it to add by providing an overarching framework for its maintenance. This first line sets a tone for the whole student government. And our goal is to make sure that the preamble clearly establishes this document creates the foundation of that basically autonomous student government that every WNL student benefits from. In addition, we added at the end, every student body membership here, these provisions and applicable university policies. This simple statement just basically says, our constitution treats every WNL student equally. The second change that we had regarding the preamble was the wording. We might not get to the whole thing, but originally, it is kind of riddled with questionable grammar, and just reads pretty choppy. And even though it seems a little over the top to promote a whole amendment to getting rid of some commas and prepositions, we think it kind of reflects our overall vision of the constitution. That is, we want our constitution like we want our government, complete, but clear and to the point. The very last thing we did was add a small phrase in the second paragraph of the preamble, which states, the constitution shall promote the interests of all. This really goes to kind of the heart of what we were trying to do with some of the bigger amendments that we'll get to in a minute with the student rights. And even though this change seems a little perfunctory or good, we think the implications are pretty far-reaching, because we don't believe that there are just mass injustices going on in the WNL campus right now. At the same time, we think simple truths such as equality are necessary to be at the forefront of the foundation of any governing body. With that, we're going to transition over to our student rights proposal. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jay. So, one of the first things we actually started talking about when we met was adding a student rights section. And luckily, after the surveys, we had overwhelming results, and roughly 90% of people also wanted to add student rights to the constitution. So it really made us feel good that we were going in the right direction with this. And in addition to preamble, the article itself for student rights will start with no student governing body heretofore or henceforth established shall deny to any member of the student body these explicit student rights, which basically, all it's saying is no student governing body shall deny valid rights. And some of those that we're going to go over, I'm going to actually go over three of the five, and then John's going to go over the others. But this is the first one, basically, to make sure you have the right to due process if accused misconduct falls under jurisdiction of not the EC, but SFHB and dash JC. This is the standard that's already filed at WNL for the most part, but we want to make sure that it's codified, so we help to ensure that it will be infringed upon later. We don't feel that it ever would be, but who knows what the future could bring, so let's make sure that this is there for the next generation. Next, it's a right to an honor advocate. Again, this right is already provided for for students who are accused of honor violations, and it's codified in the White Book. However, the committee felt that it should be expanded to all the judicial proceedings, just to make sure that there's never been any issue that came up where that's a thing should be tried to make, and so there wouldn't be an honor advocate for whatever reason. We don't think there ever would be an issue there, but these rights are just to make everyone feel better about the constitution as a whole. The next, the right to appeal. Again, the White Book gives this right to appeal to those who are honor violation. But we want to have a broader statement of the right to appeal to the constitution, so it encompasses those accused of other forms of misconduct. And really, that's going to be the overarching theme for most of student rights, is that there are things that we already do here at WNL, it's part of the culture, but it wasn't right. If we're relating these, the committee spoke with the EC, honor advocates, me and Schenk, and we all were on roughly the same page when we discussed these, so I hope that you all feel the same way, and if you have any questions about these particular rights, I'm happy to go over right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed what the first one was called, but that was the one concerning due process?
Yes.
Yes, can you explain to me what your interpretation of due process is in this case? Because obviously, when we're in the EC, it's not of legal accord, so it's a different thing, so what do you mean?
Exactly. That's actually something that came up in our discussion, so what does this ambiguous due process word mean? And it's really, we're not trying to define it per se as to one particular statement from the constitution. The way we try to write it is, it's whatever the jurisdictions of the SFHB, the HJC, or the EC like to define due process, we're just ensuring that those different jurisdictional bodies have something aligned for due process, and that will be followed by their personal guidelines rather than necessarily one overarching idea.
That sounds good.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can you go back to three? Yeah, so I'm just thinking, this just occurred to me, I'm thinking through, but the White Book is the appeals or the amendment, actually, I know one of the ways that can be amended is the amendment process is virtually identical to the student body constitution. Alternatively, it can be amended by the executive committee with a two-thirds vote on subsequent weeks. I guess what, the thought running through my head is right now, let's say for whatever reason that, like, could this create problems in terms of like, if the student body wanted to change, you know, exactly the language of the appeals process?
If it were just to change the White Book itself, would that give those problems?
Yeah, so basically, right here.
This says it has to go through a student body, or the EC's decision can be appealed to the student body, which matches what the White Book says right now, but the White Book, for me, I guess, one thing I think about is, the White Book should be in a way more amendable or easier to change than the constitution, because the White Book is supposed to reflect the current student body's generations' views on the honor system, and stuff like, do you have one source status?
Yeah, but if it were to amend there, then we would have still be stuck with this language and really opposing one another. I think that's definitely something we can take back and review further, but it's not something that we had discussed when writing this particular amendment.
I mean, it would just be a matter of changing the phrasing of words, so it's a decision, you know, can be appealed as per the process in the White Book.
I think that would make sure that they'll always link up.
Which isn't to say presenting this and, you know, allowing students this option isn't necessarily a bad thing, but there obviously, we need to kind of figure out, I guess, what...
We don't want those, these two to ever like not be in harmony.
We definitely don't want there to be a future conflict, yeah, that's something we wish here, so I think that's something we can take back to our view this weekend and review some more.
Can I jump in for just one second? One of the things that, I'm going to talk about in two minutes, but is probably appropriate to mention now, is one of the proposed changes or amendments that we have is to coincide the cycle of revising the constitution with that of the White Book, to help prevent such a discrepancy from ever occurring. But I mean, I'll explain the process of doing this a more just a little bit, but I did want to throw that out there to kind of think about. That would rectify the issue in this case.
At the same time, like I was saying, we want this to be a foundational, is that what you say that? We want this to be a foundational document, but we also want to allow students to get aware of this process.
Right. And if I can just also say, one came about the due process concept, just to kind of reiterate something, one of the things that we really wanted to emphasize, this is not the, and this goes back to your question, this is not the constitutional rights due process, this is only the right to due process pursuant to the rules for each individual judicial body. So I think that's an important distinction to make, and one you made, I just wanted to make sure everyone fully understood it.
Great. Any other questions? Pass up to John.
All right, so I'm just going to talk about the last two rights. These are basically just rights that we kind of consider aligned with the right to an opinion on campus. So our first one is just the right to vote in student body elections, and we add, even if studying abroad during an election, this might not seem necessary, but we just kind of had two concerns. One, we want to ensure that a student couldn't have his right to vote taken away for any reason, not a huge concern, but that our statement is sorry. And our second one, this aligns in the right, I'm sure the right to vote to students studying abroad, just reading that students, almost no matter where they are, have an interest in whoever sits their campus. Do you guys have?
What's the current language, or what is the current language regarding voting?
Current language, there's no right to vote, it just outlines voting procedures, but there's nothing actually saying that considers students abroad, and there's nothing in there ensuring that they have a right to vote for that thing, receive, I guess, necessarily the amount to vote.
John might have talked about this, but I mean, what are y'all's thoughts on enroll versus non-roll, you know, maybe somebody taking a semester off or something like that?
I don't think we...
Have we talked about any full times?
Any full times? I think we actually have, we talked about like, if you pay a dude, actually, you got to vote, tuition, you got to vote for the next semester.
What was your question?
Something that you need to be careful of.
You know, other thing I think I just wanted to ask is, so there are other things, right? We have student body elections, right now, obviously, we have this constitutional review stuff, there can be White Book amendments by saying that student body elections are limiting that, and like in the case, I don't know necessarily how, like, constitutional review, you gotta hit the vote, it'll be online, so students studying abroad wouldn't be able to access that. Is it something that would be worth including in here, or, I mean, I don't know.
Are you saying change the language to like?
So it's less specific to student body elections, and more specific to student body matters, or?
Right.
But again, I don't know, I don't know personally, every voting, like, what all of the potential voting things are, and how they are all procedurally designed, so I don't know if that would cause greater issues.
We're having, we're also, we're going to have some language about the voting regulations board, because right now, the constitution doesn't say anything about that.
Right.
So in that, we talked about how there are online elections, like, that's how they conduct elections. So I mean, that's why we're seeing the student body elections rather than all student body matters, because then the people abroad can participate.
Right, I guess then, do we want to also extend it to?
The question is one of what, how to choose an election, is that what I'm getting?
Yeah, I mean, like, yeah, is that what I'm getting? Yeah, I mean, there are things that I wouldn't consider election, but these amendments, but I would think that students studying abroad should have.
I think our vision was that the broad election would be, not just when you or I get elected that's just an easy, but also decent thing for them, you know?
Yeah, like the purpose, they just work, it's student body matters, or something to that effect, or elections and matters, or, you know, not like, maybe over encumbered something, but I also don't want to leave anything out that, you know, I think is important. I mean, we're at the point now where all of this stuff can be done off, there's no reason not to include a student of government.
All right, we'll move on to the second one. And that's just the right here for any student governing body with any matter of interest and concern. This actually is also already used in the constitution with respect to the EC, so we're just using the language to expand it to where you can, here before the student judicial council, SFHB, any kind of student governing body that has, is a relative issue we want to talk about. And we kind of thought this would be the way to kind of increase transparency and enable students to have share their opinions or thoughts with any student governing body other than just the EC.
Does SFHB, that's basically what it could be regularly? That's?
I don't think so.
Yeah, no. But I mean, but I think it would be very feasible to convene if someone wanted to talk to us about a procedure, or someone that died.
Would this include I have seen your ban now? Are they considered student governing bodies?
Those are governing bodies of student, of all student organizations, so it's separate from like a full student.
Okay, I just.
No, I think we all, I think I discussed that with you guys in the beginning, sorry.
You know, that's it for me.
Okay, so this is the one that I was going to present on, but like I said, you're just saying, this first one is completely his creation, and we all completely agree with it. It's a notification for when the EC decides to increase the activity fee from one year to the next by more than, by 5% or more, then they have to send out justification to members of the student body explaining why they did that. I've talked with Nathan all about this, and I mean, he believes that 5% is a good, a good number to go by. Normally, it doesn't increase by that much, but they're saying that this next year it will, because fancy dress went over last year, which is another reason why we think that this is important, is that it'll hold these, maybe hold club leaders more accountable or things like that, so that so EC could say, we're increasing it by this much because fancy dress went over, so then it's not just like, oh, the EC is increasing for no care or anything. So, and it also might discourage, it might discourage club leaders from going for budget if they can see this is, they might be called out for doing this. Does anyone have questions about that specific amendment? Jeff?
I'd be curious, and this is again, kind of the administrative block on person to me, and we've talked about this a little bit, is, you know, administrative block, notice and comment. I'd be curious if it'd be worth adding, you know, notification for increased student activities fees, and a one-week window for students to, you know, do it prior to, you know, a full table. Right, I mean, round and us, and obviously, it's not something anyone could anticipate, like, we're talking about, a lot of these things are cultural, we do it anyway, you know, no one's trying to do anything, but to kind of put it in writing, you know, we can't just put out a notice Monday, and then on Tuesday, increase it 5%, or 6%, and be like, hey! You know, it takes any of that kind of, and to be out.
Yeah, definitely. Any other questions?
I like the idea of the accountability for student groups. When you talk about notification for increasing student activity fees, is that, would that be something along lines of we're increasing, you know, we're increasing student activities fee because a group went over, or is it because fancy dress went over? Or is it because like, I guess, is it, there's going to be accountability there, is it going to be that student groups are going to know the activity online, and they're going to be accountable to the student body for the increasing student fees? Or is that just a broad statement, this is why we're doing it because some groups went over? So I feel like there's two levels of accountability that you receive.
So maybe we need to get more specific with, depending on, I mean, feedback from you guys, do we want people to be individually called out, or is it something more of an interesting practice?
I mean, I don't see accountability with, you know, with student groups, you know, if they were, if there would be a year shown that these groups were the ones who were in the red, like.
I think that's what we're...
That could be handled maybe in another area, I think there's some student body stuff in there. My only concern, including it here, would be, let's say, the dollars are 50 cents this year, and that's why we're, you know, activity fees have to be up 5%. You know, by increasing it up, and then allowing the EC, when they do that justification, either call out a single group, or groups in general, or give some other reason, which could be perfectly valid, that's there. But I think, to your point, I think there might be some room, and I don't know the budgetary language, but I think there is some budgetary language in the constitution, there might be a place for some of that, and I'd definitely be curious to pursue that more.
I don't think there'd be reasons besides just groups going to red for stuff, but if they were, like, that would be the accountability measure that you'd want to outline for that constitution. I guess my personal perspective, I don't necessarily think that this kind of requirement needs to be in the constitution itself, I think that that should be more of a requirement for budget, the EC's budget requirements. I mean, on some, I am, I don't, I guess, really see any problem with saying, you know, the EC must, like, David, or, yeah, it's saying about, David was saying about having the commenting period on it, I mean, just, for me, I guess, the language that I'm envisioning that'd be most appropriate in my mind would be, if the EC is choosing to change or increase the student activity fee, they must provide notices to the body, have like a one-week period of comment. I think that should be the extent of this amendment, and then, you know, if the EC want, or, we certainly, future ECs could, or the current one could pass, and I was saying, in the budgeting policies, you know, the EC shall make a list publicly known of student organizations that overspent their budget.
Just like we, just like when public, we gave everybody at the end of the year, we can discuss publishing at the end, and I think...
At the end of the year, what groups went over?
I would totally agree with that every year.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's exact points of note, that probably wouldn't be a constitutional thing, but I think that that's something seriously for us to discuss, and I really like that internally, as kind of our budget procedure.
Because it doesn't need to, the constitution doesn't need to be addressed in like, you know?
If it's procedural, if it's all student government, then certain things that are directly EC-related, and, you know, I don't necessarily think that just enshrining them, I guess, one, enshrining them and making them very difficult to change when it could just be a proceed, more procedural issue.
Like, I mean, goal is to make them all get kind of accountable, and so you can explain to us, like, any reason that you might actually have for raising fees, we don't want, of course, we all have to name someone's name every time, or list something and have a rigid way, but just kind of leave that single.
When, or where do y'all get to the budgeting, because there's some, there's actually an amendment that I was, I was going to suggest to y'all.
Okay, I mean, we don't, we decided not to incorporate, like, we were just talking about incorporating policy, budget policy into the constitution, this is the only time that we're going to be addressing that, so I would suggest.
Yeah, I mean, I, I put this in writing for y'all, but one of the things we talked about was, we have the general budgeting policy, and that can be pretty much changed at any time by the EC with a majority vote, it's not, there's nothing in the constitution that directly says this is how it can be changed, and the idea, I think, we were going to put forward was, put it in the constitution in some way that says, in order for the executive committee to change their budgeting policy, or their policy concerning student organizations, like those, that other stuff that we talked about in that previous meeting that we had, you know, saying, in order for the EC to do that, they need a two-thirds vote in favor in two subsequent weeks, pretty much very similar to the language of what it requires to change the White Book, is sort of my thought, and I think I'll write that up.
And maybe even along with kind of the transparency, kind of requiring that that budgeting policy and that student organization policy be publicly accessible, which then puts it out there. Yeah, I'm sure it is, but, you know, we're kind of talking, that doesn't, that's not a procedural thing at all, it's a transparency and kind of, you know, along those same lines.
Well, me and Schenk actually suggested that we put hyperlinks in to the student handbook, we could put a hyperlink into the budgeting policy too.
Yeah. What, Nathan, how do you think?
Yeah, I was just going to really briefly say, I think that the five, I think it is a great amendment, and I think that for a bunch of levels, and I think most importantly, though, it just allows, you know, the EC to give a justification for forward the increase, because I mean, I sort of think, say, EC's member, they want something, they'll be like, wow, this like changed a lot, you know, and not have any idea why, and so, and this year, like, certainly, like, the fancy dress overspending, like, was an exacerbating point on the budget, but even beyond that, like, it hasn't been raised by, like, it hasn't kept up with inflation over the past, like, you know, four some odd years, and so being able to say that in justification, I think that's a great idea, I mean, and then, secondly, I just want to clarify that there is a general budget for everyone, like, there is a general budgeting policy that's separate from the constitution, and so like, those are the two different documents that we're dealing with here, so it's, yeah.
What were you going to say?
I just, I want to echo what Nathan said, that if it's a constitutional amendment, the EC currently has the power to change the EC's budget policies, but if it's a constitutional amendment, then they wouldn't have the power to just change it, they won't, turn it into.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I think that language, like, suggested that.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much the language in keeping with any other changes that are in these documents to this point.
Another EC duty to do on transparency is that currently, the student body secretary is... is required to post, um, the minutes of student body meetings or E C meetings, um, publicly posted, but it doesn't specify a timeframe, so they're proposing that it be within two weeks of the meeting, excluding academic breaks. And this is something Nathan and I talked about, and he thinks that's a reasonable time period. Um, it allows students to be aware of what's actually going on, um, but it's still, and it allows the E C also, um, like, approve the minutes of their next meeting a week later. But it's still, I mean, it's still, it is a good, a regular thing to have, um, in the Constitution. Um, any questions on that one? And then the final one is, um, have requirements to the vice secretary to post attendance agenda for the E C meetings, um, publicly posted, just like he does with the meeting minutes, but twenty-four hours per hour to the E C meetings. Um, and also we're going to stipulate that he has to be in consultation with the E C president to do this, so he can just come up with his own. But we think this might increase, I mean, we had a, one of our survey questions, there was a very favorable response for this, um, for, not necessarily that people would, some people said that they would look at it and they were attending meetings, but even if they wouldn't, even if they were attending meetings, people were saying, look at it, or at least they felt more comfortable with having, with the idea of having something like this. So, any questions on that?
Are these only physical postings or are they also electronic?
Right now, as far as I know, they're both, I mean, but, I mean.
For minutes and everything, but we don't, we don't actually post attendances now.
Now, this isn't in the Constitution right now, this is something that we're proposing. But minutes are posted online meetings.
And, and with the change, both would be in both forms?
I mean, that's what we were envisioning, but.
Yeah, the, I mean, the thing is, is like, so right now it says publicly post and it doesn't, like, define what that is, mainly because if you, especially with regards to physical space, like, you know, physical space changes all the time. Online, I mean, we do it because it's, uh, because it's an easy way to reach out to the whole student body. I mean, I don't think it necessarily needs to be included in it, it needs to be online, but it certainly could be there.
No, I, I mean, I was just curious, yeah, yeah.
I'm actually curious about something. Um, in the, this, this kind of goes to the second one that you guys are making. Sometimes when I, when I read the, the E C minutes, you guys go into executive session, which is provided for in the Constitution, but what would, uh, you know, why would the E C go into that session? Like, what, what is the impetus for that?
Um, well, it would be to discuss anything that had, that would, that would just not be appropriate for, like, so deliberations for budgets, for example, like, we have to vote on the budgets in, in, in public, like, in, in, uh, and do that, but, but like, the deliberations about that, you know, can be first just for logistical purpose, like, writing down everything that everyone says during deliberation period is pretty intense, but then beyond that, you know, the, uh, you know, there might be like some considerations that aren't, uh, like, shouldn't necessarily be public knowledge. So, you know, like, I was discussing in, like, a conversation with one of the leaders of this organization, this thing, like that, it's a new consideration or something like that. I don't know, I mean.
So it's, so it's mainly budget talks, or is it only budget talks?
I, I think this is another area where the dual role, the E C is not only a student government body, but also have for, you know, running the honor system. Most, like, in terms of student government decisions, we go into executive session for deliberations. And that's the only time we really go into executive session for student government matters. You know, it, it just so happens that, again, since we are the same body, frequently what will happen at the end of a meeting is we will go into executive session and we will take care of it with student government stuff and then talk about something on a system issue at the same time because it is a closed session. Um, I don't know, that fully answers your question.
The, the student body stuff, that's, like, is it only budget talks or is it?
It would be, it would be deliberations for issues that cost.
But you can't, you can't.
No.
And that's one thing I've been trying to talk about is, I don't think we're gonna have time to deal with this in, um, our provisions, our, our, but I've gotten some feedback that it should be clear, or that the proceed, the current procedure listed in the Constitution for entering into executive session, which is like a two thirds vote of honor president, isn't really followed right now. I don't know if that's true, but I'm just checking. And so they were, so people have, you know, thought maybe we should list out the reasons and then a member could say, I think we should enter into executive session for reason A or whatever. But, I mean, that's not something that I feel like would be good to include in the Constitution, which is very.
No, I agree, so, if I can, what I'm hearing you say is the minutes would read, you know, the executive committee went, went into executive session to deliberate on, you know, ex student body, you know, ex student organizations, deliberate on the student budget and discuss honor system matters, period, and stop. And that would be included in the minutes rather than just the executive committee went in. I'm, I'm totally cool with that, I, I think, but I think to your point, it doesn't necessarily need to be a constitutional thing, but I think that's definitely something that we can work on internally as far as getting that, cause I'm, I'm absolutely, I think that would go a long way, if for nothing else than perception, as far as how it goes, so, um.
But also, I mean, the procedure of you guys actually entering into executive session, I mean, if the procedure is not followed, I think maybe it should be changed in the Constitution. I just don't know how it should be changed. So I don't think that, that might not be something that we ended up addressing.
I believe it's just a matter of us following it, but I don't know that it's, that the results are any different. I mean.
Well, I've, I've heard that it's sometimes hard to just be like, we're, I mean, if it's an open session to say this is what we want to debate in a closed session, I mean, just because it's open. So it's hard, I mean, it's hard to get the two thirds vote if you don't know what you're talking about.
Which would have to be put out in open in order to justify the closed.
Yeah, I mean, and, well, I think that, cause executive session extended both to, like, honor system matters and student government matters. I mean, if like, the, so, you know, White Book provides for if, uh, if, you know, the executive, if the committee believes it, I don't know, I don't know what the exact language is. But basically, the, the understanding is if you have, uh, like, an E C hearing and there's, and there's like reason to believe that this is, or like, people have gotten comfortable with that this is not in honor by legislature, like, uh, something, then you can enter into executive session to vote on that. However, like, actually entering into the executive session would mean, and having a vote on it would mean that you have to discuss that in the hearing in order to go to that. It's a, I mean, it would basically be doing it in the hearing, so, you know, there would not have to be change to add the discretion of the president or a two thirds vote. I mean, I'm sure that, like, if, if the president were to say, I'd like to go into executive session, imagine without a doubt that every single E C member would be willing to do it.
But should a member have that ability to do that, E C member? Cause then it would just be up to the president.
I'm sure they would, I mean.
Yes, I think.
I think that's kind of procedural-ish. I mean, like, written as this is how it's done. I mean, I just, I don't think any real member would have a problem doing it.
No, but I think to her point is if, if it's written that's how it's done, and we need to do it that way and it doesn't work, and that's why we're not doing it that way, then it needs to be changed to be language that does work. So I, I think, I think that's a point to.
What language works.
Yeah, I think to your point, it's like.
Something, yeah, something that's hot, so, uh, was, um, just making the minutes more specific. And I think Nathan's done a good job with that during the secretary's, but, um, we were considering also, and this isn't on here, but we're considering an amendment to, um, call for not just the minutes, but also more substance in these minutes. So maybe somehow incorporating that into the secretary's duties. But I'll go ahead and ask that to the next person.
I mean, like, but I'm just trying to, I'm sure he would be there.
I would love that, I'll be there if you want.
All right, so next we have the procedural duties and I guess we're gonna try to go over these a little bit more quickly since they are a bit more procedural, but, um, the first point of being more reduced for the representatives. So, um, specifically, this would be requiring the E C by a majority vote to appoint one of its representatives to help oversee budget allocations with the vice president and one representative to help oversee committee appointments, um, with the secretary. And this is for the reason that the E C officers have a ton of responsibilities right now, especially during spring term, and requiring the E C reps to do more help of this would alleviate some of these officer stresses as well as open up time for them to concentrate on other positive changes on campus. And it could also, um, help prepare members to hold an officer's position in the future. Any questions on that one? All right. And then, um, the next one is E C approval. So a lot of times in the Constitution, it says E C approval, but it doesn't specify exactly what this means, whether it's a majority or a two thirds majority. So we went through the Constitution in several cases and examined what, which would be appropriate. So an example of, um, where a two thirds vote might be necessary is when it calls for, um, in the Constitution, one of president exercises is the power to do anything necessary to prevent the interest of the student body. And so we thought as a check on that, it should be two thirds. If it's something simple, it won't be much of an interest, but if it's a more controversial issue, this would be a necessary check. And then, um, something that might be less controversial, like a president's appointment to a standing committee could be a simple majority, um, because not as controversial. So, any questions on that one? All right. Uh, the next is the non-attendance policy. So right now it says that, um, the E C has the power to remove any of its members for continual non-attendance, but it does not say what this would be. So we're gonna specify it as three unexcused absences. So this prevents, um, you know, theoretically, uh, someone could be dismissed arbitrarily, so there's context against that and makes it more clear. Okay, all right. And, um, the next is standing committee and special committee appointments. And, um, so for this, we want to strike out the requirement that the incoming president of the E C must appoint standing as special committees by June first each year. And the first reason for this is that it's not very prepped timeline anymore since the spring term has been reduced from six to four weeks. And the second is that actually the standing and special committees are appointed throughout the year so to reflect the actual way it happens, um, we thought this change would be appropriate.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, I think the definition of standing special committees is a little ambiguous, like, it's, I mean, I think that every, yeah, I mean, we, we appoint, like, task forces on, you know, to deal with certain problems that arise. So for example, like, we just started one on Hartley, just because Washington in the street, like, just got closed down. But if that committee had to be appointed by June first, then it doesn't make any sense because then.
Exactly.
No, yeah.
Yeah, that's another great justification is that they're a temporary values a lot of times and so they need to be appointed as the issues arise. Great. And then, um, the last is, we're going to the student bar association budget. And, um, we want to strike out the requirement that the student bar association must make a proposal in the spring of each academic year for necessary needs to operate from August fifteenth until the end of September. So reasoning for this is that the process is changed, so now the S P A doesn't receive any special consideration. Um, it's now, its budget proposal is considered with all of the other clubs. So it can just be, we're black white actually. All right.
I'm actually, I have a, it's not up here right now. I, I'm just reading this from Article five of the Constitution and it says, so section A. Um, the executive committee shall have supreme legislative, executive and judicial power in all matters pertaining to the student body. It shall act as the representative of the student body in any situation in which such representation is needed. Uh, my concern is more along the first line of that clause, and it's because if there is an appeal, in the end, it's the students who have the supreme authority. They are, so it's sort of a confusing word, okay, cause in the end, I, there, there are certain instances where they don't actually have supreme authority.
Oh, we're gonna do this in a second. That's a really good.
I'm sorry.
No, that's a, no, that's.
I'm impressed with your.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, we're dealing with this right now.
All right. So right now, the only, uh, student body actually mentioned in the Constitution is the E C. Obviously, things have changed a little bit. Um, most of these bodies are relatively new. I believe that S J C is only coming in the nineties. So to make this the overarching framework, we're gonna try to outline how each of these four, S F H B, S J C, U B A and E C all work together. We're gonna try to flesh out their jurisdiction over things. Obviously, it's kind of, kind of confusing. We spent a couple of weeks talking about, you know, is something, does the S J C can't go to the E C? And how does that work in S F H B? So, uh, the amendment, the first amendment we're gonna try to do is outline the judicial branch side of things for the entire story. That being said, we're also, currently, there's an article saying duties of the E C. Obviously, y'all have more than just, uh, this honor system to deal with. So we're going to, along with the judicial branch amendment, we're also gonna outline your legislative, uh, duties, try to, um, put more spotlight on the positive role that they play.
So along with your question, um, we're stipulating that the E C does have supreme legislative power? So we're keeping that the same, but there's no statement now that says that there's, are there ruling, a statement if, or in the passes, that the E C has supreme judicial executive?
The, the thing that I'm curious about, um, is that last year, I wrote an article in, in the file that suggested one of two things, I'll just talk about one, um, in which, uh, so say, for example, a member of the student body comes up with a good idea, whatever it may be, to amend the White Book, whatever that may be, um, and that person gets, you know, a bunch of signatures and then they wanna have a student body wide vote, and then that person gets a two thirds majority and, okay, so logically, that, I feel like that would follow that it would amend the White Book previously up to this year. Uh, in the White Book, it stipulated that only the E C could amend the White Book. And I think that's been changed, Steele mentioned this earlier on, it has been.
It has been changed.
Okay, so it seems to me that still now legislatively speaking, the student body has in some cases supreme authority.
I think that, well, actually, I mean, if you, if you keep the ballot process for, cause there is, I think there is a clause in there that says, uh, any decision of the E C can be overturned and retracted by a student body with this, uh, in the Constitution there, towards the end, I'm pretty sure there's a wrench mark of a hundred people and that brings it to a vote. Um, and then we go through the fifty percent student body, two thirds of that, and then it can return.
So, so to your point, I think is that it says it, but it's not true and nor does the Constitution reflect that it's true except for that statement. So maybe that statement itself.
This is pretty.
Right, right, because even the Constitution itself acknowledges that.
So, uh, I guess original is not the correct word, cause it's really not the original jurisdiction of the student body, but, uh.
Well, we, we, yeah, we have a good, a supreme judicial power.
Right, but you can legislate, but you can legislate power, it's not.
So we can.
You could just use the word primary.
Yeah, I think that would probably be more operative.
That?
Operative is, operative is probably the best.
Good thing, yeah.
This is the last, this is the last.
This is the last couple amendments, um, last couple amendments. So a couple of things I might just point out, um, on these final five amendments, is that one of the things we did, and I think it's a pretty important, um, idea, is that we added a phrase, um, to a wholly legislative constitution, to the office, that all student government officials would hopefully eventually have to say it. But that's another change I'll address in just a second. But basically, um, there's two components to the office amendment. So the first one is adding this phraseology to the amendment. And the reason we feel that's really important is because we spent a lot of time. And the reason we feel that's really important is because we spent a lot of time working on amending the constitution so that it truly is a framework for student government here at Washington and Lake. But it can only be a framework for that student government if student body officials take that seriously. So one way to emphasize the seriousness of the constitution is to have student governing officials pledge to uphold. Um, and that's very analogous to what our US government officials do. And I think that's an important idea and, and part of furthering our vision for this document. Similarly, um, it, the document applies to, uh, student government officials beyond the EC. And so I think to merely have EC members say they have office is, I think, a bit remiss of us. And, and so we propose to have all student government officials, including those on the SJC and the student on the hearing board, um, and those students on the university board appeals have a say they have office.
Um, the only thing I would change with that is elected officials? Because like the students on the hearing board are appointed.
Yes, yes, I see what you're saying, yes.
Um, sorry, I just kind of worked.
I, yes, I think that's a very good point. And the university board appeals students are appointed as well. So since.
You could say all, that's an important thing.
All, or all government officials either.
Yeah, and I, cause we, we have, well, I guess if they're officials. Yeah, I mean, either that or just, you know, all student body officials or, you know, rather than, it, it's just a matter of trying to not be remiss and not include, um, who we should. Cause I think your point is all taken, that we are remiss in just having the EC do it.
Yeah, it's a very good point. Does anyone else have any concerns? Okay, um, the next thing I want to talk about briefly, I don't think I'll be able to stay to hear this. But, um, we are proposing to omit the mention of the first year class president in the constitution. And, um, the reason we're doing that is not because we feel that the first year class president is in an unimportant position. It's because it does serve a purpose in some context. But, um, we feel that it's not a governmental position, okay? It holds no executive or judicial authority. And as such, we think that it is not, um, it's not following through with our vision of the constitution as a governmental framework because it's not a governmental position. Um, importantly, we drafted this amendment in conjunction with talking to Dean Roderker, who is the dean for the first year experience or associate dean, he has a really good name. But, um, and then we also talked to Taylor, who is currently the leader of the, uh, the student advisor of the FYLC. So, and they, and they got some very good feedback about to what extent the president serves as a governmental figure on campus. And essentially the general consensus was that he doesn't. Now, the other thing I wanted to mention is that the senior, uh, the sophomore and junior classes do not have class president. So it's not something that's like a hollow tradition here that we're suddenly eliminating. And speaking of which, we're not technically eliminating the position. Uh, the first year class could still choose to elect a president. Likewise, FYLC could choose to nominate someone as their president. But it's simply omitting and depriving a constitutional standard. Okay, the next amendment is very similar, eliminating the media board, being that we currently don't have media board. Uh, and so this is part of, um, following through with our vision to, uh, have the constitution reflect the current status. And that's very similar. We mentioned voting regulations for it earlier. Um, basically, we want to enumerate the duties of voting regulations board so that we can cut down on any arbitrariness, um, and also provide a more streamlined process for those duties. But this is not substantive change. Uh, we're just simply recording what they actually do. So the last thing I wanted to mention, and this is probably one of the more important and substantive, more substantive changes that we are making, is that we are changing the, um, frequency that the, we're proposing to change the frequency that the constitutional review committee will meet from four years to three years. Um, and the reason we're doing that is because we think the current way of doing it does not apply for any institutional memory. The hope is that there will be some carryover so that some members of the CRC will be able to, will, will be able to serve again during their college career and will be able to channel their experience and knowledge to constitution to help lead the, the CRC the second time, second time of that, so to speak. The only sticky wicket is that we're also proposing that this three year cycle does not begin until two thousand, uh, fourteen and two thousand fifteen so that we can coincide the cycle of revising the constitution with the cycle of revising the white book. So that we can create a more comprehensive framework for student government and hopefully facilitate communication between both of those organizations.
I, I just have a question and I think that it's a great, like, I mean, obviously it's difficult to just like start a committee, um, scratch and don't have like, uh, you know, any institutional knowledge, uh, memory. Uh, my only, my only thought is that, uh, with, do you feel like this would encourage if more change than is necessary? Like, I mean, I guess if you wanna keep a, a document devoid of complexity, the worst way to do it is make it like simpler to change. You know, obviously it's why our constitution in the United States is so difficult to change. Um, and certainly this doesn't change the difficulty level of the change. But do you feel like there may be like a temptation to change just for the sake of change? I mean, I know if I was appointed to, like, a, uh, committee, I feel that, you know, the urgency to do as much as I could and, and even when maybe it's not necessary to fill up legislative board more and more, I guess.
That's something we, that we actually talked a lot about. And one of the things that we realized, well, she may have that and every committee may have that. But I think we have enough checks on the process of getting this actually passed that really wouldn't have any terrible impacts, it has her through the EC, but has her through the student body. So would, I mean, and we don't really know what happened in the last constitutional review. They could add that twenty amendments, so we don't know that none of them got passed. We have no idea. Um, and this could be the same way, I mean, like it didn't pass. So we think by having the checks, that the impact would be, if anything, very narrow, short.
Well, I wonder too if having returning members would also check that to a certain extent?
Yes.
Where having worked on it three years prior, you're gonna have some people that are less, that are gonna feel like, hey, don't, you know, not that they're opposed to change, but their, their perspective is going to be different. And, and there might be some internal check in that regard also. By having the three year, you've got somebody there that just did and has already spent a lot of time with it.
And also another one of our important roles, I think, is writing these, um, articles, I think, in the newspapers and like our Facebook group that we have, like, getting people interested in that. Because a lot of people didn't even know that there was a constitution. And even though they're still not at a huge, great level of interest in it, I mean, if these people know there is a constitution that they could get a look at, which I think might, if the constitution review committee went only over ten years, I mean, I don't know how much, I mean, I don't really think students would know that it existed.
That'll make sense.
And we talked about the other thing, just to kind of speak about this for a minute. We talked about, you know, should we go two years or five years in trying to coincide the constitutional review committee with the white book committee? Um, and there was some debate. I personally think that two years, I mean, although it sounds like an especially short amount of time, I think it's important for a couple of reasons. One is that if you go five years, there's gonna be a whole cycle of students that will probably maybe never get an experience to really, um, be aware of the constitution. So I think that's really one of the important features of our committee is that we are raising awareness about the constitution. And secondly, I think five years is a long time ago without revising the constitution. Um, and it would defeat the institutional memory, the purpose of the amendment as well.
Yeah, so now we came to the overview constitution.
Actually, I have, well, at least one more thing.
Yeah.
I'm curious, I don't see any language in the student body constitution that effectively, uh, talks about impeachment proceedings. It knows, the one that I see is says that the EC.
It's my opinion.
Is it an hour review?
Students all. The EC is an hour. Where is that?
Wait, what do you? Students have the power.
To.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Where, where are you?
Trying to remember.
I'm, I'm not remembering.
It might be towards the back of that bunch of signatures.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So there, it might be something worth moving in, in such a way as to.
Student rights section. Yeah, it's moving the impeachment power to the student rights section.
It still feels more like, but student power section.
Yeah. I think that's.
I don't think it's very right to, but I think.
It, it, yeah.
I mean, yeah, but it's not the same kind of.
Yes, exactly.
Kind of odd man out.
It's not a. But no, I think, I think if it is in there, then it, it should be highlighted in such a way as to. Yes.
Did anyone find exactly where?
Yeah.
Can you? I wish to come to a joke.
Number eight, student body gains power, center of the letter C. Two thirds voted for him by the student body, just above, at a meeting which has been duly advertised for three days provided for in number three, section C. For they require the resignation of any unsatisfactory officer named or appointed under this constitution.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
There you go.
Uh, we could definitely, that would be better, the student rights section.
Or the.
How?
Could be answered.
I think so. I think it is.
Somewhere other than buried at the bottom, yeah. But I think that, yeah, I don't know, sorry, I mean, I think you guys can discuss, you know, putting it back like the place I said, you can move that one.
So these up on the screen are all the amendments that we talked about today. Um, and were there any additional amendments? Um, I mean, deciding impeachment that we talked about, no one said we already talked about. Anything else that people are? The budget.
Yep. Budget and student, or act two, whatever it is, like, how we deal with student organizations, that's the.
I'm, I'm curious, and this isn't right down the middle, man, just a question for the EC in general. How does like an audit process work?
How's that?
An audit process work?
As far as auditing a student organization or?
Funds that you give it to the student organization.
So, yeah, that was an issue. And it's, uh, one of the things that we've been working pretty hard to address and actually really deal with in the process. Um, is now all organizations are required, um, it is three times during the year to submit all expenses over two hundred and fifty dollars that they have incurred. And they also have to simultaneously submit a budget update on what they plan to spend the remainder of their funds on, um, for the rest of the year.
And also, uh, when they come for allocation initially, they usually have to have a plan of, uh,
Sure.
what they plan on spending, which they obviously have finished off and showing what they spent on. That should match up with the three dollars. So that would force a check.
And I think that that, uh, language is in the student budget policy, which would be addressed in that two thirds. That wouldn't be allowed to change. So that's all part of that.
Well, if there aren't any other points of clarification or proposed amendments, then I just wanna thank you guys all for coming. I really appreciate the feedback, so, thank you.